In pain, broken, and in distress. For many of us, that's really our story. However, the harsh reality is that when people ask us if we're okay, we say yes. We have become professional actors in the church where when we're in pain, when we're in distress, we act as though we have it all together. Listen, I'm Tridarius Beard. I'm the ministry evangelist of the Northwest Church of Christ here in South Haven, Mississippi. And for the next 12 weeks on Wednesday night, we'll be engaged in a body of teaching called Detox: 12 Steps to Restoring Your Hope. Can we be real and be honest tonight to say that we too sometimes go through things we don't want anyone else to know about? We too have pain. But our harsh truth is, we oftentimes go back into environments that keeps us sick. Environments that are broken, environments that are damaged. And the question becomes, are you willing to detox from people, places, and things that keep you sick? Somebody told me a long time ago, "You are as sick as your deepest secret." Can I ask you a question? How sick are you? God wants you to be released from the things that has caused you to be sick. You need to detox from those things. And when moments of distress and moments of pain, where you feel like our hope is gone, when you feel like the burden is too heavy. Paul would say it like this, "What shall we say to these things? If God be for us, who shall be against us?" So join us as we engage in this body of teaching that will bless your life and to help you to give you hope in hopeless situations. And God bless you.
I'm appreciative of the great God of heaven for the opportunity once again to be able to study a portion of God's holy and devout word. It's my prayer that you have come with this mindset that I want to know more about God. And I pray tonight that this is not just a routine for you, just to be on on Wednesday night, but you've come with a mindset that, "God, I want to get closer to you. I want you, God, to give me something that I can use in my life to not only make me better as an individual, but also to make my family better." And so that's what we're going to, well, that's what we're after tonight. And I pray you take this journey along with me, that I believe that as we take this journey, I believe that it's going to bless you if you take heed to this word. Now, I've already told you, we started this new series the last week, last Wednesday. We preached on it on Wednesday as well as Sunday. And it's my prayer that the word so far has blessed you. I want you to know, if, listen to me tonight, if we go through this series, as we go through this series, if you are so intentional about your life being better, I promise you, I promise you this, if we follow the instructions from God, I promise you, your life will never be the same. I can't have this faith for you, but I promise you, as the word of God go forth, as you practice the things that you hear tonight and for the next 11 weeks, I promise you that your life will be better as a result of it. Now, as we begin to study the word and as we begin to talk about Detox: 12 Steps to Restoring Your Hope, you need to know tonight that God has a special word for you. You need to know tonight that God has something for you tonight, that He wants your life to become better. Now, we started off last week talking about detox and the need to detox. Talking about the necessity of you and I detoxing in order to become what God needs us to become. Now, as we continue to study tonight, as we begin to look in the word, I want you to be very clear that this word is intentional to make you uncomfortable. I hope you get it tonight, that this word is designed to make you feel some type of way. This message is designed not for you to look at your neighbor, not for you to look at your spouse, not for you to look at your friend, not for you to look at your enemy. But this word is designed that you can look at yourself in the mirror, eyeball to eyeball, and to say to yourself, "What is it in my life that I need to detox from?" Amen. I want you to understand tonight, now, as we continue our study, I want us to make sure we have this working definition of detox. Because if we're going to detox, we need to know where we're detoxing from. So you'll keep hearing me say the word detox, and I probably need to find it for emphasis sake. I don't believe you're slow, but I believe constant review is the student's glue. I believe if I say it enough, that some way, somehow, you'll be driving down the street and all of a sudden it'll hit you, detox. And so that's what I'm after tonight. And so the working definition of detox, watch this, is the removal of toxic thinking, behaviors, and cultural influences. Follow that? Remember what detox is? So when we're talking about detox, we are talking about the removal of toxic thinking, toxic behaviors, and toxic cultural influence. Say it one more time for the people can hear it, that it is the removal of toxic thinking, toxic behaviors, and toxic cultural influences. Now, this is going to be important through the whole series, because we are basing the detox on those three things. Your toxic thinking, your toxic behavior, and your toxic cultural influence. Make sure you write it down, because you need to understand what we are detoxing from. Now, I showed, shared with you last week, there are 12 steps in order to detox. There are 12 steps we're walking through. It is my prayer already that you have already started working on the first step. It is my prayer between last week and this week, you have already looked at your own stuff and said, "I'm working on step one." That's my prayer, is my prayer. I don't know how I mean it, but it's my prayer that the word that was spoken on last week was not, has fallen on deaf ears, that you have made a conscious decision that you're going to pursue step one. Remember what step one was? It is that we admit, watch this, that we are powerless over our issues, or addiction, or compulsive behavior, and our lives have become unmanageable. Y'all remember what I was talking about there? Amen. It is that we admit that we are powerless over our issue. You fill in the blank, addiction, or compulsive behavior, and your life has become unmanageable. Step one is so necessary. Step one suggests that you already admitting to God that you got an issue. You are admitting to the Lord that there is some things in your life that you need to detox from. There needs to be a removal of some things that has kept you in an unhealthy state for so long, and God said it's time to detox. But in order to do that, you first gotta admit you got an issue. Now, you may not want to admit tonight, but everybody on this line tonight got an issue. Your issue may not be my issue, my issue may not be your issue, but everybody tonight got an issue. And you got to admit first of all, that whatever your issue is, I need to look to God and say, "God, this is my issue." See, I want you to know that oftentimes when folk hear about you got an issue, they automatically think of the sin of the flesh. That has been our problem. The problem has become, you think the only way you got an issue, if you got a sin of the flesh. But I want you to share with you tonight, that your issue may not be a sin of the flesh, but your issue may be the sin of the spirit. You may, amen, you may not struggle with something in the flesh, but you may struggle with something in your spirit. You are the one who hold grudges when someone has done you wrong. That's your issue. You are the one who have malice and hatred in your heart. That is your issue. You are the one, amen, who fires himself or herself in a place where you have to compare yourself to other people in order to feel better about who you are. That is your issue. Whatever your issue is, whether it's the sin of the flesh or the sin of the spirit, you gotta first admit that you got an issue. I wish somebody would just tap in the chat box and say, "I got an issue." It's all right, because God knows that you know you got an issue. And what you gotta stop doing, you gotta stop being in denial. Oh my God, I said a word tonight, that here's the thing tonight. The thing tonight is that you gotta stop acting and fronting like you ain't got an issue. Amen. You gotta stop acting like, amen, that there's not some stuff in your life that needs to be removed. Because each and every one of us can have some stuff in our lives that keeps us stuck and keeps us, that keep us in an unhealthy situation that we cannot be what God needs us to be. Somebody, you gotta get out of denial before we even can pursue any other steps. The first thing you gotta admit you got a problem. You gotta get out of denial, D-E-N-I-A-L, denial. Don't even know I am lying, bless the name of Jesus. You cannot be in denial. There are so many members of the body of Christ, they are in denial. They are so many people in the body of Christ, they don't even know they lying about their issue. And tonight is the night that you make a conscious decision in your heart and in your mind that I'm going to admit I got an issue. Now, if you have, wherever you are, write your issue down. Nobody has to know what it is. It may be your attitude, it may be your closed spirit, it may be you sexually acting out, whatever that thing may be, I need you to, you need to write it down, because that's the thing God wants to heal. That's the thing God wants to fix. That's the thing that God wants to push you through, because God is saying to you and I that you cannot restore your hope, you cannot detox unless you first admit that you got an issue. So the first step was that we're going to admit that we are powerless over our issue and our lives have become unmanageable. Now, the second step tonight, this is week two, second step. The second step is, came to believe that a power greater than ourselves can restore us to sanity. Oh my God, tonight, I feel it, I feel it, I feel it. Step two is, I came to believe that a power greater than myself can restore me to sanity. Okay, somebody didn't get it. Step two, step two is followed by step one. Came to believe that a power greater than myself can restore me to sanity. Step two suggests, child of God, that if I'm going to detox, if I'm going to have a removal of toxic behavior and toxic thinking and toxic cultural influence, I gotta believe that Yahweh can restore me to sanity. Oh my God, see, you gotta know, step two suggests that you gotta believe with all your heart that you can restore yourself. You gotta believe the only one that can restore you is Yahweh. Let me say Yahweh tonight, because I want you to know Yahweh is his covenant tonight. I want you to know, when I say Yahweh tonight, I'm talking about the I am that I am. Because he's the only one that going to be able to restore us to sanity. See, I want you to know tonight that you can't do it by yourself tonight. You can't deal with your issue. You would admit you got an issue, but you still trying to handle your issue your way. You got an issue, but you still trying to put your issue in your hand and try to do it yourself. But I want you to know tonight that you will never be able to help yourself the way Yahweh can help you. See, Yahweh is I am that I am. Yahweh is God saying, "If you're going to come to believe that I can do it, you gotta let me be who I am." Somebody put, typed in the chat box, "Let Yahweh be Yahweh." Because sometimes we won't let Yahweh be Yahweh, and Yahweh is trying to come in your life and my life in order to restore us to sanity? You gotta believe that he can do it. You gotta know that you're not strong enough to get yourself out. You gotta believe that you're a man, that you're not wiser enough to get yourself out. You gotta know that you don't have all the resources to get yourself out. The only one that can get you out of what you in, put you back in a right state, and restore you is going to be Yahweh. See, I need you to understand something. Yahweh is a covenant name. In the Old Testament, they will call him Yahweh, because that's his name. I told you during the Spiritual Warfare Series, that God, in the Eastern culture, culture rather, God, anything in the spiritual realm is a God. I hope y'all remember that. I don't want to go back over that too. But y'all remember telling you that, anything in the spiritual realm is a God. And matter of fact, in the Eastern culture, y'all remember, we talked about, there was more than one God. See, anything in the spiritual realm is a God, but not everything is a Yahweh. There's only one Yahweh. I'm gonna get happy tonight. See, he's God, but he's Yahweh. There is no Yahweh like the Yahweh we have. That's why when Moses went to him, and Moses says to Yahweh, "God," he says to him that, "Well, I'm going to tell Pharaoh." Because Pharaoh, he's familiar with many gods. And they gonna want to know, "What God sent me?" And God says, "Tell him Yahweh sent you." "I am that I am sent you." Now, I need you to understand something. This word, Yahweh, it reflects three tenses: past, present, and future. Don't y'all miss your shout tonight? The God that we serve, he's Yahweh. It reflects three tenses: past, present, and future. Watch this, he was, he is, he forever shall be. Past, present, and, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get happy about myself. He was, he is, he forever shall be. Still don't get it. He's Yahweh. So I gotta let Yahweh be Yahweh. I got him to be, he was, he is, he forever shall be. In case y'all ain't got it yet, Yahweh does not operate in time. Yahweh is eternal, and he visit time, which means Yahweh, he's Yahweh in the present, he's Yahweh in my past, and he's Yahweh in my future. Oh my God. In other words, if I was Yahweh in your past, what makes you think I want to be Yahweh in your present? And if I was Yahweh in your present, what's going to make you doubt the future? Because I want you to know something. The only way that you gonna be able to come to believe that a power greater than yourself can restore you to sanity, you gotta know that I am that I am. And that if I was with you in the present, and if I was with you in the past, then I should not be with you in the future. Let me tell you tonight, church, the reason you ain't got to be afraid, the reason you ain't got to twiddle your thumbs, the reason you ain't got to pace the floor, the reason you to go to sleep at night, go to sleep at night, and you ain't got to be tossing and turning, because God gonna be up anyway, because he says, "I am that I am. I'll be whatever you need me to be, and it's up to me to restore you to sanity." You gotta believe that. Our problem is, the reason we still hopeless, because we still trying to do it ourselves. The reason we can't make it, the reason we can't go through it, because we still, we have not yet believed in Yahweh. See, do you really believe in Yahweh? Do you really believe that he's the God of my past, my present, and my future? If you believe that, then what you would do, you will come to a faith enough to know that even when I don't understand God, I believe you understand. Now, let me break this down. I come to believe a power greater than myself, that's Yahweh. Yahweh is the power greater than myself. Restore, to put back in a former or original state. Wait a minute, God. In other words, that Yahweh is the only one that can put you back to what you used to be. Oh my God. God is the only one that can restore your peace. He's the only one that can restore your happiness. He's the only one that can restore your joy that you once had. He's the only one. See, you trying to pursue those things based on your power. But he says, "If you come to believe that Yahweh can restore, can give you those," he says, "I'm the one that can do it." Now, watch this word, sanity. Watch this sanity. Now, the reason some of y'all struggling, y'all ain't said amen yet, because some of y'all don't think y'all insane. But let me tell you, I hate to bust your bubble, but baby boy, baby girl, you are insane. Let that resonate a little bit. See, I know, I know, I'm not, I ain't trying to insult you tonight, I ain't trying to be mean tonight, but whether or not you know it or not, you need to be detoxed, because you got some stinking thinking, and you are insane. Yeah, yeah, yeah. See, sanity suggests doing, sanity says, "The ability to think and behave in a normal or rational manner." That's sanity. Let's be honest, some of us have done some insane stuff today. Nobody said nothing. Let's be honest, somebody has done some insane stuff this week. Mm-hmm. Some of us, on our walk with God, we oftentimes do stuff that don't make sense, is insane. In case y'all still don't think what, y'all not insane, let me take, let me give you a working definition of insanity. Insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results. Oh, child of God, you must, you are insane. Insanity is doing the same thing over and over again, and in your mind, you are expecting different results. You know what I'm talking about? I'm talking to sister girl, I'm talking to bro man, you dating the same type of dude, same type of girl. The last guy you was with is similar to the one you with right now. The last woman you was with is similar to the one you got right now, but you expect something different. Let me tell you, you insane. Amen. It's almost like, it's almost like I'm going to keep doing what I want to do, but I'm expect a different result. And the definition of insane insanity is that you are doing the same thing, but yet you want something different. It's almost like you say, "I want to lose weight." You keep saying, "I want to lose weight, I want to be healthy," but you ain't changed your diet. You still going to Burger King, you still going to McAdes, amen. You ain't exercising, you just love the thought of being healthy, but you keep doing the same thing and expecting different results. Can I tell you, that's insanity. You ain't going to lose weight all eating Burger King every day, bless the name of Jesus. You ain't going to lose weight, and you never want to walk around the block, you never want to get on a treadmill. That's insanity. But I'm here to tell you tonight that Yahweh can restore you to sanity, but you gotta believe. You gotta believe that Yahweh can do it. You can't do it by yourself. And I'm going to tell us tonight, whether or not we want to admit, you helped y'all some insane stuff. You, right now, you thinking of stuff that you've done over and over and kept saying, "Why I ain't going right?" Because you doing the same thing, it's insanity. And God says, "I'm the only one that can restore it. I'm the only one that can do it." Now, I need you to, I need you to walk with me, because we gotta, we gotta be able to follow step two. I need you to get it, I need you to, because what my goal is, every step, I want you to practice the step once we get done with it. Amen. I told you last week, start comparing your thoughts to the word of God. When your thoughts does not matches the word of God, you remove your thought with God's thought. Y'all follow that? Amen. It's because you're admitting you got an issue, right? So the goal is, is for you and I to start thinking the way God wants us to think. Yes, that's the goal. It's almost like a husband and wife, you in a good mood, you at the house, bless the name of Jesus, and you ask your spouse to do something for you, and they start yelling. Now, the you that's in you want to get them the business and get them what they gave you. Y'all ain't got to say nothing. You just want, you want to go back out. But that's your fault. But when you replace it with God's thoughts and replace it with his word, his word says, "A soft answer turns away wrath. Grievous words stir up anger." Now, you may not want to do it, but that's what his word says. So I'm saying this, when we're going through these steps, I don't want you just hear the step, but I want you to practice the step once we press in and in on the Zoom. When it's time to practice it, the best way to practice it is when you in the heat of the situation. It's time to practice the very thing that you've been taught. Now, I need you to see something. Go to Proverbs, chapter 27. I'm going to read from the NIB. Proverbs, chapter 27. And I want to look. "We come to believe a power greater than ourselves can restore us to sanity." Watch this, Proverbs, chapter 27, Proverbs, chapter 27, verse number 19. Watch what the Bible says. The Bible says, "As water reflects the face, so was life reflects the heart." Oh, so simple but true. "As water reflects the face, so was life reflects the heart." Let me put it in your spirit. "As water reflects the face, so was life reflects the heart." What does that mean? If you go to a stream of water and you look down at the water, the water is going to give you a reflection of your face. So the proverb writer says, "The same way water reflects your face, your life reflects your heart." Oh my God. There's a need for detox tonight, because your life really reflects your heart. Now, I need, I need you to understand something about the heart. The heart is one of the components of the soul. Did y'all catch that? The heart is one of the components of the soul. So I want you to know something, that your soul, that's the real you. Your soul is your mind, is what you think. Your soul is your emotion, that's your heart, is what you feel. And it's your will is where you make your decisions. Oh my God, y'all got to get this tonight. "As the water reflects the face, face of someone's life reflects their heart." Watch this, the heart is the component of the soul. The mind, that's what you think. Your emotions, that's your heart, is what you feel. Your will, that's what you make your decisions. I want you to see how insane you are in your soul. I need you to see tonight how sick your soul really is. Because I want you to see something. If detox is a removal, if that's be true, if it's a removal of toxic thinking, toxic behavior, and toxic cultural influence, then this right here is necessary to talk about the soul. Why? Because if my soul consists of my mind, my emotions, and my will, and if I'm sick in my mind, my emotions, and my will, guess what I'm sick? Your soul. Your soul is sick. Wait a minute. If I got messed up thinking, and I think a certain way based on my own experience and not based on what God said I'm sick in, because whatever I think I'm going to feel, that's my emotion, that's my heart. That's my heart. Whatever my, whatever I feel, that's why I'm going to, that's why I'm going to make my decision. That's your will. You make wrong decisions out of your will because of what you feel. And the only reason you feel that way is because of what you think. And so the text says that the way I know what your life looks like, all I got to do And so, the text says that the way I know you, what your life looks like, all I gotta do is, if I wanna know what your heart looks like, all I gotta do is look at your life. That's why the Bible says, as a man thinking in his heart, so is he. That's why the, the Bible says, the, that's why the Bible says, guard your heart. For out of it flows the issues of life. That's why the Bible says, were a man hardy, there be his treasure be also. If you wanna know what a man hardy is, find out where he spend his money. If you wanna see what a woman's hardy is, find out what she spent her money. You ain't gotta spend a lot, a lot of time what he treasure or what he, what he, what she love. No. Find out whatever you spend the most money on is where your heart is. It, it's a reflection. The heart is a component of the soul. And so, as a result, you're so sick in your soul and you don't even realize. Do you not know tonight, there are people tonight on this line that you've been walking around here sick in your soul, but you think it's normal? Have you ever been around a person who smoke? Come on now, y'all be honest. They smoke, whatever they smoke. They smoke and you a non-smoker? And when they come around you, you smell the smoke, but they can't smell it? Because they been, they been smoking so long, they immune to it, they don't even smell it? But when they get around non-smokers, the non-smoking can smell, but they can't smell. See, here's the, here's the thing tonight, you're so used to being dysfunctional. You're so used to be, to operate in your dysfunction. You can't go around people and you expect people to tolerate your toxic behavior and your toxic thinking and your toxic influences, all because you sick and you won't even admit you sick. And tonight, what you gotta do, you gotta say, God, what I gotta do? I gotta deal with my soul, my mind, my emotions and my will. That's my soul. The word, the word, the word, here's the thing, the, the word soul comes from the Greek psyche. That's what we get the word psychology, because it's the study of the mind. And some, and so that's why sometimes you'll go to the doctor and you ain't, you feeling some type of way and you sick and you trying to find out what's wrong. And then you'll go to the doctor, go to the emergency room and they'll come back and they'll say, well, we don't see anything. I mean, all the tests came around five because something physical can't detect a heart issue. Something physical can't touch a spiritual issue. And you want the doctors to tell you what's going on with you, but they can't detect what's going on in your soul. You are sick. My God. And so, he says that I gotta believe a power greater than me can restore me to sanity. Now, I need you to know, why I gotta ask a question. This the question I wanna ask. Why is it important to allow Yahweh to restore me to sanity? Why is it important, preacher? That I allow Yahweh to restore me to sanity? I'm, I, I pray I get done. If I don't get done, we, we gonna finish next week. We'll just have to slow down a little bit. Number one, the reason it's important, you need Yahweh to restore you to sanity, number one. Because if you don't, God will suspend favor from your life. Oh, that's a hard word tonight. I told you this is gonna be a d- difficult series. If you don't allow the Lord, if you don't come to believe that, that Yahweh can restore you to sanity. If you don't just release it and give it to him and say, God, work or do with me what you wanna do with me? And stop trying to hold on to the old you. If you don't do it, then God will sus- sus- suspend favor on your life. My God, I don't know about anybody else, but I know, I want the favor of God on my life. I want God to begin to do some things in my life that I can't do for myself. And he says, in, in his word, I'm gonna show you in just a minute, that if you don't allow Yahweh to restore your sanity, God says, I'm gonna suspend. No more favor on their life. Not until they allow me to, to come to believe that I'm the only one that can restore them to sanity. Now, I, I don't want to assume that everybody know what favor is. I don't wanna assume that. I don't wanna assume that when I talk about the favor of God, that you know what favor is, because everybody, amen, have talked this word favor around and they'll say something like, favor ain't fair. But sometimes you don't even know what you talking about, because what is the favor of God? Here it is, what's the favor of God? Favor is when God does something that is totally undeserving. It was no actions required on your part that he's gonna bless you. That's the favor of God. The favor of God is when God does something is totally undeserving in your life and it was no action on your part to, to do anything, God just gave you favor. Y'all ain't feeling me. See, favor is different from sowing and weeping. See, sowing and weeping, the principle of sowing, weeping, so you plant a seed, you, you get back what you put within, that's what going to weeping. No, 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 no. Favor is that God says, I just decided it was gonna be you. I just decided that I'm gonna do something different in your life than I do in somebody else's life. And although they don't understand it, it's the favor of God. It's the favor of God when you ain't got a degree, but you getting paid more money than those who with the degree. That's favor. Because God, they don't work with everybody. See, God, favor is, favor is, God says, I'm gonna do something totally undeserving that you can't buy this. You can't work for it. God said, that's the favor of God on your life. Y'all remember Joseph, right? Joseph was favored by God. Joseph was the youngest brother. He told him his dream. He had the coat of many colors. And his brothers got mad because of his favor. My God, y'all don't remember that story? He, they stripped him of his coat because of his favor. And they mad with Joseph because of the favor of God on his life. He didn't ask to be chosen. He didn't ask for the coat of many colors. His father gave him the coat of many colors. And if his fathers had, or his brothers had an issue with anybody, they should have had an issue with the father because it was the father, the one who gave him the coat. Y'all missed it. See, sometimes when God favor is on your life, sometimes God will put a coat on you and folks are angry and mad because of the favor on your life. And the very thing they see you walking in, they wish it was them, but you can't get mad at me because of the favor of God on my life. I, I, I didn't give myself the coat. God gave it to me. See, some, uh, I, you know what I've learned church? I've learned some people go in, uh, but some people start grieving when they see the favor of, of God on your life. I, I, I discovered that some people go in, go in a loss and go in depression when they see the favor of God on your life. But I want you to know something, with the favor of God on your life, there's nothing nobody can do about it. Now, here's the thing. Jesus, oh my God, I ain't got time. Jesus grew in favor with God and man. That's Luke two fifty-two. I don't want you to miss favor because favor is undeserved. None you did for it, I'm gonna give it to you. Totally undeserved. It's favor. But Jesus grew in favor with God and man. Now, I need you to know what I, you know how insane we are. Let me say how insane we are. We are so insane in our thinking that we'll say to ourselves, that I don't need to be favored nobody but God. I don't need to be favored by man. Hmm, is that right? Because Luke two forty-five-two says, Jesus grew in favor with God and man. There are some people who only wanna be in favor with God. That's why you still don't even see your blessings. And then there are some people who wanna just be in favor with man and not God. That's why you don't see your blessings. But if you really gonna be like Jesus, there needs to be a bal- a balance between God and man. Because if Jesus grew in favor with God and man, then who are you not to be in favor with God and man? See, you acting like, amen, that I ain't gotta prove none, no, 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 uh, nothing to nobody. Who told you that? Oh my God, y'all quiet. I ain't gotta prove nothing about it. Who told you? That's, that's stinking thinking, cause I read somewhere. Be not conformed to this word. But when ye transformed by the renewing of your mind, that you may prove that which is perfect in the scepter and perfect will of God. Who you proving it to? Those who are watching. You need to be in favor with God and man. That's why the text says, give, and it shall be given unto you. Press down, shaking together. Watch this, shall men give unto your bosom? God says that when you're favored, you're not just favored by me, but I give it, make it so that you're favored by man and a man will bless you and they don't even know why they blessing you. It's because you're favored. Now, I need you to see this. If you don't get this thing right with the sanity, God will suspend favor from your life. I want to show you this and I'm done. We gonna be done tonight. I thought I was gonna get through these three points. I ain't gonna get through them. Bless the name of Jesus. Um, go to Deuteronomy chapter one. And we gonna, we gonna, we gonna paint this picture and we gonna be done. Deuteronomy chapter one. And I want you to see, I want you to see something. Deuteronomy chapter one. Look at verse number, verse number, uh, six, Deuteronomy chapter one, verse six. Watch what the Bible says. The Lord our God said uh, to us at her, you have stayed long enough at this mount. Wait a minute, God says, you'd have been too long at this mount. I'm tired of you circling this mount. It's, it's time for you to move. Verse seven, break camp and advance into the hill country of the, uh, of the Amorites. Go unto all the neighboring people in Arab, in the mountains, in the western foothills of Neva and allow the coast to the land of the Canaanites and to Lebanon as far as the great river Ephraates. Watch verse eight. See, I have given you this land. Go in, take possession of the land that the Lord God, he swore to give unto your fathers, Abraham, Isaac and Jacob, and to the descendants and after them. Notice what he does. He says, what I want you to do, I want you to go take the land. Remember what we talked about church? The promised land ain't talking about heaven. The promised land is the land of opportunity. It's the land of favor. It's the favor of God. It is God giving you favor. It is God saying, you gonna have vineyards you ain't planted. You gonna have houses you have not built. And I'm giving it to you. You ain't do nothing to deserve it, but I'm gonna give it to you. It's your favor. Drop down to verse number nineteen. The Bible says, then as the Lord God commanded us, we set from herb and went towards the hill country of the Ammonites through all the vast, druffled desert that you have seen. And so, we reached Kadish Barneum. Then I said to you, you have reached the hill country of the Amorites, which the Lord our God is giving us. See, the Lord your God, watch this, have given you the land. Go up and take possession of it as the Lord thy God the Father told you. Do not be afraid and don't be discouraged. What you saying, God? God says, I got a blessing for you. The land belongs to you. Favor is on your life. I need you to think the way I think, not the way you think, cause I'm telling you it's yours. You ain't gotta fight for it. Amen. Just take it. Get it. Watch this. Verse number, verse number twenty-two. Then all of you came to me and said, let us send men ahead to spout the land for us and bring back a report about the route we are about to take and the times we're gonna come in. Watch verse thirty-three. The idea seems good to me, so I selected twelve of you, one man from each tribe. They left and went up into the hill country and to the valley, verse twenty-five, taking with them some of the fruit of the land. They brought down to us and reported, is a good land that the Lord our God is giving us. But watch this, watch verse number twenty. Now, I want you to watch the thinking. I hope y'all following this. Watch the thinking. God said, it's yours. You got favor. You ain't do nothing to deserve. It's yours. Don't be afraid, don't be discouraged, get the land. Verse twenty-six. But you are unwilling to go up and rebel against the command of the Lord your God. Watch, watch this. They are so caught up in their own self. They are so self-focused that they're not God-focused. Oh my God. Watch what happens, verse twenty-seven. You grumble in your tents. Y'all know what grumbling is complaining. It's murmuring. It's when you speak under your breath, so nobody can't hear what you saying. You grumbling. And he says, I, I didn't took you out of Egypt. You was a slave. And now I brought you out and you got the nerve to grumble in your tent? Don't that sound like us? How many things have God brought you out of and you still complaining about? How many, how many situations have he gotten you out of? He got you a situation la- uh, 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 got you out of a situation last week? And then you get in this week and say, God, how you gonna bring me out? Watch this. The Bible says, you grumble in your tents and said, the Lord hates us. So, he brought us out to Egypt to deliver us into the hand of the Amorites to destroy us. Where can we go? Our brothers have made us lose heart. They say, the people are stronger and taller than we are and the cities are larger and the walls up to the sky. We even saw the Amokites there. Then I said, do not be afraid, do not be afraid of them. The Lord your God who is going before you will fight for you. Wait a minute. You allow another voice to discourage you after God has already told you what he's gonna do. How many times have you read in this word where God told you what he's gonna do to you, for you? And then you got around somebody who didn't know God the way you knew God? And they, and they convince you that God is not who he said he will. He said, watch this, verse number, verse number thirty-one. And in the, the desert, there you saw how the Lord your God carry you as fathers carry his son all the way you went until you reached this place. So, you have watched how God moved. Anybody know what I'm talking about? Have you ever watched the move of God in your life that you couldn't explain to nobody else? That, that you have experienced with God that nobody couldn't tell you if it had not been for the Lord on my side, I wouldn't have made it through? He says, you watch this, verse thirty-two. But in spite of this, you did not trust the Lord your God. You didn't even believe who went ahead of you on your journey and fire by night and a cloud by day to search out places for you to count and to show you the way you should go. My God, he says, I'm constantly showing you who I am. I'm constantly trying to help you to see that you can't trust me with your negative eye. You can't believe in what you can see with the negative eye. You gotta use those spiritual eyes. Watch what he says, verse thirty-four. When the Lord heard what you said, he was angry. What did you hear, God? I heard them complaining in their tents. Out of everything I did for them, they still talking about what I did do for them. They, they focusing so much on what's wrong that they don't even see what's right. Can I tell you tonight, there are some folk online tonight who's on here listening and you have complaining more than once today. Uh, the same old thing about what ain't right, what's not going right, what, what, this could be better, that. See, you gonna mess up and sus- sus- suspend the favor that God has on your life. He said, he got angry. Watch this. Not, verse thirty-five, not a man of this evil generation shall see the good land I swore to you to give your forefathers. He said, watch this, I'm, I'm not even, because of your, because of, listen, they didn't kill nobody. They didn't lie on nobody. They didn't do, don't, no sin of the flesh. They just complaining. My God, wait a minute, I'm not gonna let a whole generation get favor only because they don't even believe that I can do what I say. They don't even believe I am Yahweh, I can do whatever. I brought them out of Egypt. And if I can bring them out of Egypt, just because you gotta stay in the wilderness, you don't stop doubting me in the wilderness. If I brought you out of Egypt, I'll get you to the promised land. But he said, don't worry about it. You ain't going. Watch this, verse thirty-six, except Caleb. He will see it and I will give him and his disciples the land. He set his feet on me, set his feet on, because he followed the Lord wholeheartedly. I wish I had some Caleb Jones. Who say, I don't know what nobody else gonna do. I don't know what my family gonna do. I don't know what the church gonna do. I don't know what this person gonna do. I know what I'm gonna do. I don't care what it looks like, even in the midst of a pandemic, in the midst of sickness, in the midst of financial difficulties, God, I still believe. Watch, watch what he says. He says, he will see it. Watch verse thirty-seven. Because of you, Lord, became angry with me also, you said. This is Moses talking. You shall not enter it either, but your assistant Joshua, the son of Nun. Wait a minute, Moses, the preacher can't even go to the promised land. You can't even have favor because you let the people sway your mind. Why you sending spies up when I already told you it's yours? My God, why you gotta send somebody to see the land when I already told you it's yours? So, Moses, you can't go to the promised land. You can't even get the favor. But your assistant Joshua came. He went into, encourage him because he will lead Israel to inherit, verse thirty-nine. And the little ones that you say would be taken captive, your children, who do not yet know good from bad, they will enter to the land. I will give it to them and they will take possession of it. But as for you, turn around, set out towards the desert along the route of the Red Sea. Do you see? God said, I'm gonna suspend it. God says, I'm looking for people who's gonna stop talking the talking. God says, I'm looking for people who still stop talking the talk and walk the walk. I'm looking for people who gonna stop talking about they love me, talking about they trust me, but won't do anything about it. And what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna give it to another generation. I'm gonna give it to another people. I'm gonna tell another people, I'm gonna give it to them. I'm gonna allow favor to ho- hold on them. Because they believe me wholeheartedly. But for you, because of your unbelief, you ain't going to the wrong. You have suspended the favor of God because you too busy complaining about what God ain't doing. And every time you hit a tragedy, every time something don't go your way, now your lips poked out. Now you saying, God, why me? Oh, you saying, God, why you had to allow me to go through this? Well, somebody gotta go through. Why not you? And so God says, since you don't even realize, and since you have not embraced me. God says, don't even worry about the favor. Watch this. He says, I want you to turn around. Don't try. I'm closing the door, so don't open the door. Verse forty-one, then you replied, we have sinned against the Lord. We will go up and fight as the Lord our God commanded us, so every one of you put on a weapons thinking it's easy to go up to the hill country. Now, watch what they doing. So they saying, oh, we sorry. We want the promised land, God. Let me, give me another chance. I'm sorry. I repent. Okay, I'm getting my way. Y'all know how that is. You know how mom and daddy told you what to do, and they told you not to do something, and you did it anyway. And now that they told you, you can't do this. Now you trying to wash the dishes, and you trying to get the house in order. You trying to do all that is, and all you can do, all that you want to. But you still ain't gonna get what I told you I'm gonna get you. God says, I need you to turn around. You done messed it up. I'm angry because you complaining in your tents. You grumbling underneath your breath like I can't hear you because I'm God, I'm Yahweh. So I hear what you saying. But watch what he said. He said, I don't want you to go up. Watch what he says, verse forty-two. But the Lord said to me, tell them, do not go up and fight. Because I will not be with them, and you will be defeated by your enemy. God says, I want you to know, if you go up, you gonna go up on your own and not with me. God says, I'm telling you, you messed up. You messed, you was in a season. You missed your shift. And sometimes we have cannot be restored to sanity because we don't believe that a power greater than us can restore us. We won't believe in Yahweh, and we missed the shift. I'm asking you tonight, don't miss your shift. When God has opened the door. When he has said, go through the door, go through it. I don't care what a man says, what a woman says. If God has opened the door, and all the, all the lights are green, and you down there, I don't know if I wanna do it. I don't know what I wanna do. And you talking to everybody else, and you gonna miss your shift. He says, don't go up. Because if you go up, you gonna go without me. Verse forty-three. So I told you. But you would not listen. You rebelled against the Lord. Watch this. Uh, Lord's commandments, and in your own arrogance, you marched up to the hill country. So in other words. You gonna say, I'm gonna do what I gonna do. I heard what God said. I missed the shift, so I'm just gonna put something in my own hands. I'm gonna start the business without talking to God about it. And God says, you'd miss your shift because I was shifting you in a different area. And you denied my resources. You denied my guidance. You denied my counsel. But if you start the business without my ca- my consent, you on your own. You got married and you missed the shift. You got married and you didn't take sour counsel. So if you get married and you go do it, well, hey, you wanna do it, amen. You gonna think it's gonna be like Little House on the Prairie. But it's gonna be Nightmare on Elm Street because you missed the shift. He says, don't try to create a door when I done closed one. Don't go looking for a wonder to get over my will when I've already closed the door. Watch verse thirty-four. The Amorites who lived in those hills came out against you. And they chased you like swarm of bees. And beat you down from Syria all the way to Herb. You came back and wept before the Lord. But he paid no attention to your weeping. And turned a deaf ear to you. Now this gone. Do y'all see this? God says, don't go. I ain't, I, I'm not ordaining that. You went anyway. You got defeated. Now you coming back weeping. And you weeping and crying. God says, I ain't even hearing you. I'm gonna turn a deaf ear. Because you don't believe that I'm the one that can do it. You thought you had the power to do it in your own arrogance. Listen, tonight, this is the message, and we'll finish up, uh, step two next week. But this is the message. The message is that if you gonna come to believe a power greater than yourself, or store you to say, we gotta deal with the soul, the mind, the will. The, the emotion, we gotta deal with that. But the reason it's important to allow Yahweh to restore it, because if you don't, he'll do what he just did. He'll res- he will suspend favor from your life. And you don't want God to do that. We'll look at two more next week. And, uh, and I'll tell you what the two are, so you could be prepared to talk, or we'll discuss it. The second one is your victory sometimes depend on who you connected to. Oh my God. I want you to know the reason you need God to restore your sanity, because sometimes your victory is dependent on the folks you are. The folks that you connected to, sometimes they can, they can, they can help, they can hinder the victory that God has for you. And then we're gonna talk about because, if, because if you don't follow the way, his way, you will miss his glory. We gonna talk about that next week. I pray something will say it tonight that has challenged you. That you will say to yourself, okay, let's, let's follow that. So what I want, so your homework assignment, continue to compare your thoughts. To God's word. So what else, so whenever you start thinking stuff and believing stuff, ask yourself, what does, what does God's word say about that? That's what you need to continue to do and compare it to the word of God. And then what you need to do, when God, when you pray of this prayer, now this, this is a prayer I pray all, all, and I, I need you to adopt this prayer tonight. If you really wanna answer from God, I promise you, God gonna answer this prayer. Can I give you a prayer that God gonna answer? Can I give you the, y'all ready to vote? If y'all ready to vote, give me some of my modes. I'm gonna give you a prayer tonight that I'm for sure. I know that I know God gonna answer this prayer. If you wanna know, if you wanna know, God gonna answer the prayer, this is what God, this is your prayer. God, if this is what you want me to do, open up the doors. Allow me to see it. Open up the door. Make it clear to me. If it's not God, if it is not your will, defeat me in me trying to go through. Oh my God. I'm telling you tonight, God gonna answer that prayer, cuz God gonna either show you, I'll open up the door and you'll be able to see. Or I defeat you and you're trying to go on through. Now, sometimes when God tried to defeat us. We're still trying to open up a window when he closed the door. And God says, if you do that, I want you to know, you got all the red flags. You got all red flags, know you're supposed to marry that man and that woman. You already know you're supposed to marry. You just saying it. But because you wanna open the window, you want the one to knock the door. God says, you on your own. I showed you, it's not the time to start the business, but you didn't consult me. So now, I'm closing the door. If you go, you doing it on your own. God, that's a prayer. That God will answer. That's a prayer. Uh, any questions tonight as we close? Uh, I'm sorry, I lo- I linger a little long tonight. Any questions tonight? Any questions tonight? Any questions? Sister Carter, have any questions tonight?
No, sir.
Uh, amen, amen. God bless each and every one of you. I pray something will, will say it tonight that will help you in a mighty, mighty way. Uh, Brother Jefferson, I want you preparing just a few minutes for, to take the closing, uh, prayer. I wanna make the, uh, announcements tonight. Um, I wanna encourage, uh, you, anybody who's interested in a GM's ministry t-shirt, please see Sister Beard. Regarding ordering and payment, uh, yeah, I believe Sunday is the last, uh, day of payment. So if you're interested. Uh, we encourage you to do so. If not, that's okay as well, but we want you to know the deadline is Sunday. And we want you, uh, if you're interested in your gym, part of our congregation, we definitely will love you, uh, to have a shirt. Uh, also, uh, if you're, if you're coming to, we have been having great attendance, uh, in our Sunday morning worship experience. Uh, the, 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 the great thing, uh, about our sanctuary, it was a six hundred seat auditorium. Uh, and so we spaced out real good, is real good. So, but we still asking that you will RSVP. Tonight, if you know you're coming to worship on Sunday, please, please RSVP so we can make preparation for you. Uh, please, uh, please work with us in that as we try to do so. So please RSVP tonight to our email address. Let us know, uh, how many are coming with you. Uh, and you'll be, you'll be, uh, be a blessing, uh, when, when you get there. Also, we wanna encourage families to continue to, we are giving, uh, get, holiday season is coming up. For Thanksgiving and our Christmas, so we're asking that every family of our congregation give a hundred dollars. That's fifty dollars a piece, a hundred dollars a family, uh, towards this thing, uh, as we give our gift cards. And, and be able to bless, uh, families during this, uh, difficult time. So we're encouraging you. To please, please, please give and send donations to both, to the Cash App, to the Vimo or the PayPal. Or you can mail checks to the address, to our address. Uh, also, make sure you're putting in the memo line when you are sending your hundred dollars. Uh, please put a, a holiday giveaway, uh, so we'll know, uh, that it's from, from you, uh, from, for that purpose. Uh, we also wanna encourage, Boma is tomorrow, uh, at, uh, six o'clock at the church building. Uh, please, cease, uh, uh, Cash App sister, Brittany Pettis for three dollars donation. Uh, we'll, we'll pray that, I heard y'all been having a great time, but please do that. Uh, that's a part, is also a part of our vision that we maintain our health for those who want to get healthier. Uh, that's something definitely we want you to be a part of, so you can make sure that you keep yourself healthy, uh, in that regard. Um, also, on tomorrow night, uh, the Young Adult Ministry Shift Ministry, me and Dr. Beer, we will. Uh, we will continue our series on, uh, Thursday, Thursday, Temptation, dude, uh, did the devil really make me do it? So we'll continue that. I missed, um, uh, I said the wrong dates, uh, last, I mean, this past Sunday, but, but this is the. We'll do this, uh, me and Dr. Beer, we'll do this and continue our study on temptation on tomorrow. And have some dialogues. I'm encouraging ages from eighteen to thirty-five, please, 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 uh, be involved. Uh, uh, let's get on, let's talk, let's dialogue. It's not for me to, to preach. I don't, I don't do the same thing. There that I do on Wednesday, so I really want to dialogue and have a, a conversation. And then on, uh, October the seventh, October the fourteenth, and October the twenty-first. Uh, Dr. Ophius Hayward will, will be, uh, leading something, uh, for the Young Adult Ministry called Christianity Before America. Uh, any, anybody can get on this. It's not just for young adults. Uh, the reason, uh, we're allowing the young adults the platform is because it is our young adults oftentimes. Who question the Bible. They question whether or not Christianity is organic. Or whether it's what they call a white man's religion. Well, we're gonna dismiss that on, there're gonna be three parts. October the seventh, October the fourteenth, October the twenty-first. Uh, and Dr. Hayward is going, uh, to do a, a, a grand job, uh, on that particular, uh, thing of Christianity. Before, uh, America. And what we, what he's gonna prove, and what I've asked him to prove, is that there was Christians. Before there was ever even thought of, of America. America is only two hundred and forty-six years old. Uh, Christianity is two thousand some years old, so you do the math on that. Amen. Uh, and also, the GM's ministry, God's masterpiece, From My Mess to My Message. Uh, Pet Rally is Friday, October the eighth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, Carl Hamilton, uh, from Dallas, Texas, the Mountview Church of Christ will be there. And we're excited about the Pet Rally as well as the latest day as well on October the ninth. Uh, amen, at ten AM. And we are, we are praying, uh, that, uh, you, the, the women, the gyms in Northwest will be in both. Uh, it'll be a blessing. And then, lastly but not least, November the thirteenth. From nine AM to two PM, we're having a clean-up day, uh, preparing for our, uh, daycare center. Uh, we, we, we need volunteers to sign up and to help us, uh, with that, this particular, uh, project. Uh, please see Sister Erby. Her number is on the screen. Uh, if you're interested in, uh, helping, please, please, please do so. Uh, yeah, we'll be glad that you did. Uh, you'll be a blessing, uh, as a result. Uh, that's all the announcements that I have. Uh, if I'm missing any, my admins, if I'm missing something, y'all please send me a message, let me know if I'm missing anything. Uh, that's all we have tonight. I wanna, at this time, we wanna take prayer requests. And then Brother Jefferson will close us out with, uh, a prayer request. Any prayer request tonight? Any prayer request tonight?